eight Richmond to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of the Hunkamenum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. The first item is adoption of the agenda. We have one addition to the agenda for item number two, a motion to allow a trustee joining the organizational meeting via Zoom to vote remotely during this organizational meeting. May I have a mover and seconder for the amended agenda? Moved by trustee Sergeant, seconded by trustee Hamaguchi, all those in favor. The motion is carried and the agenda is adopted. We have a verbal report from the Secretary Treasurer. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairperson. For the purpose of the election of the Chair and Vice Chair during this organizational meeting, Board Policy 201 by law provides that the nomination and election for the Chair and Vice Chair and the election of the BCSTA and BCPC Provincial Representatives are to be conducted by ballot. With the online meeting participation and given the policy provisions, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve a trustee participating in the organizational meeting via Zoom to cast their ballots remotely for any elections required during this organizational meeting on November 20th, 2024. Thank you, Chairperson.
We have a recommendation in front of the board that the Board of Education approve a trustee participating in the organizational meeting via Zoom to cast their votes remotely for any elections required during this organizational meeting on November 20th, 2024. Can I have a mover and seconder? Moved by trustee Tablotny, seconded by trustee Wong, all those in favor. Motion is carried. I have a little bit to read here. Before I vacate the chair to the superintendent, I would like to take a moment to reflect and share some thoughts and provide an overview of the Board of Education's activities and achievements over the past year. Going to split it up into three so that when we have some time when ballots are being counted, we'll fill the time that way. As we approach the end of 2024, I want to take a moment to reflect on the meaningful work we've achieved together in support of our students, families, and staff here in Richmond. It's been a year filled with collaboration, dedication, and shared purpose. Working hand in hand with our partners, we've made strides that truly reflect our shared commitment to creating a welcoming and inspiring place for everyone in the community. This year, we've responded to the growing need for more classroom space in our schools. Building additions at Brighouse and Cook Elementary have increased our capacity to welcome more families in these communities. These new classrooms are part of our commitment to providing accessible, high-quality education for every student, ensuring they have the space and resources to learn and grow. I'll stop there for now. And I will now vacate the chair to the superintendent to carry out the next two items on the agenda.
Well, thank you very much. Item three on the agenda is the appointment of of Returning Officer and Scrutiner. I call for a motion to appoint Secretary Treasurer Wang as Returning Officer and Assistant Superintendent Lang as Scrutiner for the election of the Board. Chairperson, Board Vice Chairperson, BCSTA Provincial Council Representative and BCPC Provincial Representative. May I have a mover and a seconder, please? Trust Larson and seconded by?
Yes, seconded.
Oh, my apologies. Trust, trustee Sergeant moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Are there any discussions? Was seen none? And I call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Oh, it's unanimous, carried. The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the election of Board Chairperson. Would the Secretary Treasurer please distribute the nomination ballots for the position of Board Chairperson?
Thank you.
I'll now continue with the story. We completed new modular childcare facilities at Maple Lane, Manoa Steves, and James Whiteside Elementary to support our community's growing childcare needs. By adding these childcare spaces within our schools, we're helping parents and caregivers access quality childcare in their own communities, directly supporting Richmond families with safe and nurturing environments for their children. We've also made significant strides in enhancing the structural safety of our schools. Seismic upgrades were successfully completed at James Whiteside and William Bridge Elementary. Alongside these completed, pardon me, upgrades, we began new seismic projects at Howard de Beck, Alfred B. Dixon Elementary, and John G. Deifenbaker Elementary School. These ongoing projects represent the next phase in our commitment to ensuring safe and secure learning environments for all. This summer, we focused on upgrades that improve our schools' efficiency and comfort. We enhanced our electrical infrastructure, improved ventilation, added efficient lighting, and introduced new safety features, and all helping to create spaces where students and staff can thrive in a healthier environment. And I'd be remiss to say that advocating for the needs of our students, families, and schools has been at the heart of our work this year. We know that a strong, well-supported public education system is essential for our community to thrive, and we are passionate about securing the resources our schools need now and into the future. With this commitment in mind, we shared our community's unique priorities with the Ministry of Education, the City of Richmond, and our local MLAs emphasizing the urgent need for new schools in our rapidly growing city center. These conversations have been an opportunity to ensure that our voices are heard and that our community needs are understood. Together, we are working toward a bright, supportive future for everyone in Richmond's public education system. As we look back on these achievements, I am profoundly grateful for the support of our partner groups, students, staff, families, and the broader Richmond community. Thank you all for the hard work you bring to this district every day. It's a privilege to work alongside each of you as we look forward to 2025. Thank you.
So folks, now we're waiting for the screener to come back and let us know if there's going to be a need for a vote. We'll do this like three or four times. Well, that's a free time. Talking on yourself.
Okay. Would the Secretary Treasurer please read the results of the nomination for the position of Board Chairperson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. There are two nominees for the Board Chairperson position, trustee Hamaguchi and trustee Larson. And the majority, who has the majority of the nominations, is Ken Hamaguchi. Yeah, so, okay, yeah. Trustee Hamaguchi, do you accept the nomination?
Yeah.
Yes. And trustee Larson, do you accept the nomination?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so then we now have one nominee for the Chairperson position. Trustee Hamaguchi now is the Chairperson-elect by acclamation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Secretary Treasurer. Congratulations, trustee Hamaguchi.
Let's switch seats, okay, let's switch seats.
I'll now pass the chair over to you, trustee Hamaguchi.
Oh, this is way more comfortable, please. Wow, this is what I've been missing. All right, folks. First of all, I want to thank Tiffany for this wonderful script that I'm going to go through. Anyways, so, moving ahead, a new chair. Thank you for placing your trust in me as the new Board Chairperson. Truly honored and excited to take on the responsibility. I look forward to working with everyone. And work closely with our issue and our educational partners to serve our community and advance the Board's vision, mission, and values. Okay, so the next piece of work here is we need to elect a Vice Chairperson. So would the Secretary Treasurer please distribute the nomination ballots for the position of Vice Chairperson?
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you, Chairperson. We have, for the position of Vice Chairperson, we have three nominees. Trustee Yang, trustee Yang, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And trustee Sergeant, do you accept the nomination?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. And trustee Tablotny, do you accept the nomination?
No, I decline.
Oh, thank you very much. So based on that, we do have one nominee for the Vice Chairperson, and the trustee Yang is elected as Vice Chairperson by acclamation. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations, trustee Yang. All right, I'm trying to get through the script here. Okay, the next on the agenda is the election of the BCSTA Provincial Council Representative and the Alternative Representative. Rather than go through this whole procedure again, just going to call for a show of interest for the position of BCSTA rep to the provincial council. Trustees, is there anyone? Two now. One want to be the main person and one want to be the alternate, or?
Be the main person, if.
And now trustee Wong?
Representative. Main one.
Main one, okay. Well, then it looks like we're going to be doing the election here. Or doing the vote.
Yeah, correct. We're printing the ballot.
Okay. I think we do this once a year. Okay, so we are distributing the ballots for the position of BCSTA Provincial Council Rep. Person who receives the majority of the votes will be declared the representative, and the runner will be appointed the alternate. You being here, so. Usually, we don't have a number, BCSTA. BCPC, half of us in conflict of interest.
Just sent the ballot.
Secretary Treasurer, please read the results of the election for the position of BCSTA Provincial Council Representative.
Well, yes, thank you, Chairperson. The trustee who received the majority of the vote is trustee Larson.
Hey, thank you. Trustee Larson, you're representative. Trustee Wong, you are the alternate. Thank you very much to you. Okay, last one, election of the BCPC Provincial Representative. So Chair, I will call for a show of interest for the position of the BCPC rep. Anyone interested in being the BCPC rep? I see one hand up. Not seeing only one hand up. Trustee Tablotny, you are the representative. Thank you very much. Stepping forward.
Welcome.
I'm here.
It's gonna fight me for it.
Oh, we do well need an alternate as well. Well, you can't be in a conflict of interest either, so it kind of limits the group.
Trustee Belisa was the alternate.
I decline. Thank you for the rust.
Oh, you're on the council, all right. You can't, I can't. Yeah, trustee Wong, you?
I can too.
Well, I guess I'll have to leave it vacant until you can fill it.
I'll have to make sure I go to everything.
You better be there.
No, I know, there's so many trips to go.
Okay. Thank you very much for putting up with that. We have the agenda, item number eight, destruction of ballots. So next on the agenda is the destruction of ballots. I will read the motion that the ballots for the offices of Chairperson of the Board, Vice Chairperson of the Board, BCSTA Provincial Rep and BCPC Rep be destroyed. Destroyed, destroyed. Can I get a motion, please? Moved by trustee Wong, seconded by trustee Tablotny. Are there any discussions? Now I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. And finally, committee appointments. Next on the agenda is committee appointments. According to Policy 201 by law, please notify myself, which committees you are interested in serving before November 30th, 2024. The appointments will be announced in December 24, 2024, and the committee members will assume their duties for one year. Item number nine on our agenda. Next on the agenda is the authorized signatories. According to Policy 201 by law, the Board will authorize its signing authorities as settled in Policy 612 and 612R for the ensuing year at its organizational meeting. We have recommended before the Board, that the Board of Education, a school district number 38, approve the following signing authorities effective immediately and until they are so changed shall be the Board Chairperson and the Secretary Treasurer, except for issuance of checks when the required signature shall be anyone of a Board Chair, Board Vice Chair, Superintendent, and anyone of Secretary Treasurer, Secretary Treasurer, Assistant Secretary Treasurer, Manager of Financial Services. Such services may be affixed by hand or by check-writing facility machine, aximally machine, in accordance with established Board policy. Can I get a mover in a second, please? Trustee Wong and trustee Larson, thank you. Are there any discussions? Any no discussions, call the question. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Item number 10, the last one. Not quite, actually. Number 10, the next item on the agenda is the school liaison trustee assignments. According to Policy 201 by law, the Chairperson will assign each trustee group of secondary and elementary school that the first meeting in December each year, the assignment shall be one year's duration, unless otherwise determined by the Board. Groups of schools will be rotated among trustees. And finally, adjournment. With no further business, can I get a mover and a seconder for the adjournment of the organizational meeting? Trustee Sergeant, trustee Belisa. Any discussions? Now I'll call the question and say, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The annual organizational meeting is adjourned. Don't go anywhere yet. Okay. Once again, thank you for putting up with that. It's a process we have to do every year and a little slow at times, but it is very important. Okay. We are now going to move on to our public meeting. Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the first people of the Hunkamenum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. I see a whole bunch of new faces out there. Usually, we see about two or three faces out there, and so it's nice to see some newer faces. Nothing wrong with the older faces, but it's nice to see some newer faces and more of them. Okay, we have some, a couple announcements. Who has the announcement, trustee Sergeant?
Thank you very much. Leadership and Management Staff Recognition Day. December 5th is dedicated to recognizing the incredible efforts of our leadership and management staff. We want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to each of you. Your unwavering commitment to our school district and the well-being of our students is truly inspiring. Every day, you navigate the complexities of our educational system with grace and determination. Your leadership not only shapes the future of our schools, but also impacts the lives of countless students, employees, and families. Your ability to foster a positive and inclusive environment is commendable. Thank you for your dedication, hard work, and the countless hours you invest in making our school district a better place. Your leadership is the cornerstone of our success, and we are incredibly fortunate to have such a talented and passionate team guiding us.
Thanks, trustee Sergeant. Trustee Tablotny, you have an announcement?
Yes, I do. Briefs regarding the 2025-26 Annual Budget will be accepted without prior notice at the December 11th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board, as well as at the January 22nd meeting, February 19th, and March 12th regular meetings of the Board. Please note that budget updates will be made available on the district's budget website, and all budget feedback will be considered by the Board as part of the budget process, which is anticipated to be completed by April 23rd, 2025. And so it begins. It's a very important process, so. And the public can participate, giving us feedback, so, thank you.
Trustee Tablotny. Secretary Wang, do we have any materials not included in the packages available to the public?
No, Chairperson, all materials are publicly available on the district's website.
Thank you. Item three, presentation briefs and special recognition. Now, all these people are presenting, usually they're for your presentation?
No, that would be, yes, for the executive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So there are no presentation briefs, special recognitions. We're going to move on to questions from the public.
I'm sorry.
You need to, you need to go.
We not do that? Oh, I checked it off.
It's okay.
I'm out of practice here, sorry.
It's a mistake.
Okay, so we have an agenda. Is there any additions, deletions, changes? None, can I get a mover and a seconder? Trustee Sergeant, trustee Belisa, thank you, all in favor? None? Kind of get a mover and a second there. Trustee Sergeant, trustee Belisa, thank you. All in favor? Okay, great, moving forward. And there still are no presentation briefs or special recognition. Uh, so we're going to take questions from the public. Uh, this is one of two opportunities to come forward with questions regarding agenda items. Is there anyone out there that have questions that they want to ask? For an education, none of this time? Okay, um, next up is our executive report. Superintendent Yuci?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Trustees, uh, and those present, um, and those watching remotely, good evening, everyone. Uh, we have, um, our board has a strategic plan, uh, it's twenty twenty to twenty twenty five. Uh, that plan, uh, is, is coming closer to end of cycle. Um, and I would like to just take a moment, uh, to acknowledge, uh, the tremendous, uh, progress and accomplishments uh, that have been realized. Uh, the, uh, the board put together, uh, an excellent strategic plan that is currently guiding the district. And, uh, kudos to everyone in the organization, uh, parents, uh, staff, obviously, our students, and the entire community, uh, for continuing to, uh, to support the education of our young people in our city and to making this district, uh, one of the highest shivin' districts, uh, in the province. So kudos and congratulations. It's, uh, it's something worth celebrating. And, uh, I'd be remiss if I did not again acknowledge the tremendous work that is happening across our district, in our schools, in our workplaces, and everyone who makes this possible. The board also has a plan, uh, as a policy, one oh one, that char. And the policy reads that, uh, the board shall, on a five-year cycle, develop and implement a strategic plan that identifies, uh, the priorities for the district as well as the goals, uh, to support a priority. So what that means is that, uh, as we get to the end of our current strat- strategic plan, uh, we have to, we've turned our attention to, uh, the next iteration of our strategic plan. And the good news, as you heard me say, is that we are not starting from scratch. We are actually building on a solid foundation and, uh, in putting together that plan. So we are one of several, uh, school districts in the province that is in that, uh, situation in terms of, uh, developing a new strategic plan. Uh, so we are working with the Ministry of Education and Child Care, uh, in that, in that endeavor to make sure that we have a plan in place. And, uh, we also have a coach, a ministry coach that has been assigned to us, uh, to work alongside, uh, staff and the board in putting together, uh, that new plan. And what the, uh, that process requires us to look at, uh, where we are today as a district and to, to recognize the, uh, other things we're doing well, but also to, to, uh, to check in and say, are there things we can do better? And I think it's important that process allows us as a district, uh, to, to take a very close look at all our student populations, all students uh, in the district, and looking at our, uh, our, the evidence in terms of student outcomes, our student well-being, and the data, the evidence that allows us to, uh, to have those conversations, uh, as we develop a new strategic plan. Certainly, the province, uh, that is something that the province, uh, is, expects of all school districts, uh, to engage in, in that process. So I am pleased to share that, uh, the board and senior, uh, staff of, uh, we are working closely. We are at a point now where we have a consultant, uh, almost at the point of finalizing that, uh, that arrangement with a consultant that will work very closely, uh, with, uh, staff, uh, and certainly the board, uh, in putting together, uh, uh, in, in putting together that new strat plan. But the first step in that process, uh, which, uh, is critical is for the consultant and, uh, to work with senior staff in putting together an engagement plan. Because as you can appreciate, the strategic plan is a significant undertaking for the district. So which, which requires, uh, a, a really detailed engagement plan. And of course, that plan, uh, will, uh, uh, distill very clearly, uh, the engagement with all our partner groups, uh, all employee groups, our parents, our students, uh, staff, uh, families, and the community at large. Because that's, uh, that's a plan that is going to serve the district for the next five years. So our board has been very, uh, has been very, uh, systematic in making sure that that relationship we have with our partner groups and certainly with, uh, our communities, uh, is some, that, that voice is reflected and represented, uh, in the new strategic plan. So there's more, more that will, uh, we'll share more, uh, on that as the progress, uh, as we begin to do that work. Uh, what I can share with you is that, uh, the engagement plan will come to the board for approval in January twenty twenty five. So that the board is, uh, satisfied that the engagement plan is extensive and covers, uh, the good work, uh, in terms of making sure that all voices are heard. And secondly, uh, subsequent, I should say, subsequent to the board approval of the engagement plan in January twenty twenty five, from February to June of twenty twenty five is when the engagement actually happens. That's when the conversations with all our partner groups, uh, with students, with staff, and, uh, families, and the community at large. That work will happen from February, uh, to June twenty twenty five. And the goal then is that we'll have, uh, uh, when we come back in the fall of twenty twenty five, uh, there will be, uh, a strategic plan, uh, a dra- a draft strategic plan that will go through cycle in terms of, uh, committees or as the board, uh, if the board chooses to have further conversations and revisions, that will happen. And the, the goal then is that we'll have, uh, the twenty twenty five to twenty thirty strategic plan for the Richmond School District uh, will, uh, hopefully be finalized by December twenty twenty five. So thank you very much. I just wanted to, uh, to, to go through that process. Uh, now, of course, the strategic plan is only as good as, uh, making sure that, uh, it's focused on the most important thing that we do, and that is the education of our young people. So today, what a pleasure. Uh, every time we have students in the, uh, in the boardroom, it's always exciting. And today, we have, uh, some of our, uh, students, uh, present in the boardroom today. And I'm going to actually pass this on to my colleague, Assistant Superintendent Lang, to do the honors, to introduce this wonderful young people and to talk about how this connects to our current work in our stra- strategic plan. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. Thank you, trustees, senior staff, members of the public. It is an honor to introduce a group of students who will be sharing reflections on their personalized learning journey experiences at Richmond Virtual School. Richmond Virtual School, often referred to as R V S, is our district online learning school that has been offering programs to Richmond students since two thousand and seven. I'm just going to pause for a moment. There we are. R V S uses a unique blended learning model that integrates aspects of both online learning and in-person learning to deliver high-quality and dynamic learning experiences. This model has proven to achieve successful results for our learners. The structure and design of R V S promotes values that are fundamental for today's learners and closely align with the value of the board's strategic plan. As the students share their stories, you will hear about many of the strategic priority goals and how they are being achieved. R V S offers students the opportunity to personalize their learning. The blended learning model provides flexibility for students to engage in learning that is tailored to their individual needs, interests, and schedule, and many courses are designed around inquiry projects or problem-based learning pedagogy. These values connect to strategic priority one, inspired learners, enabling learners to have the capacity to adapt and thrive in ever, in our ever-changing world and fostering resilient and healthy lifelong learners. You will also hear how strategic priority two, equity and inclusion, is being enhanced through R V S by supporting student learning needs and expanding the learning opportunity for students in our district to access a wider range of course offerings beyond the course op- options that are offered within their neighborhood school. Additionally, the online learning design of R V S is evident in the connection to strategic priority three, optimized facilities and technology, as the students rely on secure and stable digital platforms to support their learning. The integration of technology and A D S T is seamlessly embedded into the learning experiences for these students. So I am pleased to be able to introduce four students from R V S, Kurt, Evelyn, Justin, and Dora, along with the teacher coordinators, Mr. Gary Chen and Mr. Mark Pattern.
Before we begin, we would like to, uh, do land acknowledgement. We acknowledge and thank the first peoples of the Hunkamianum Language Group on whose traditional and unseated territories we teach, learn, and live.
Hi, my name is Kurt, and I'm in grade eight, and I joined the Richmond Academy of Innovative Learning this year. I've been really enjoying everything's, I'm really enjoying everything so far, and everything has been so fun because I've been able to interact with a close group of my friends and learn with them every day. The picture shown above in the slideshow is a project that I really enjoyed, and I got to collaborate with my peers. For humanities, we were split up into groups and had to research a historical place in Richmond. We showcased our knowledge to the class through a presentation, which we presented at the actual location. This photo above is me and my group presenting at the Stevenson Cannery. For me, for me, A D S T has been a huge highlight because I've gotten to do a lot of things that I normally wouldn't have been able to do in mainstream, such as laser cutting, three D printing, and vex robotics, which I've enjoyed a lot. Here in these pictures, you can see some of the different things that we've done this year so far. For example, above is some, several three D printing projects that we've done this year, representing our own personality. And below is a vex robotics project where we got together in groups and got to work together to build the best robot possible. Uh, in the picture above, this is us at our Strasscona Park Lodge field trip where we went together as a small group and got to learn how to work together while trying new activities we could have never been able to try in mainstream. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evelyn, and I'm also a grade eight in the rail program. The picture you see is a screenshot of our humanities Moodle course. On Moodle, we read some material, take a quiz, and do an assignment. Afterwards, our teacher gives us a group project so that we can apply our learning and present it in fun and creative ways. I really like the blended learning approach. When I was in elementary school, my whole class had to work at the same speed, and we had lots of due dates so that no one fell too far behind. Now, in rail, we have the opportunity to learn in a more personalized way by learning on Moodle and in person. Our teacher also gives us less due dates, but, and the due dates he gives us means more things are due, like from one due date, so we can divide our time, so we can spend longer on one, some things, and go quicker on others. Not only does that help us learn time management skills, but it also enables us to get as much as we can out of what we are learning. This year, I noticed that I've been making more connections from small, specific things to their deeper, more general meanings. One of the things that I think is helping me to do this is reflections. In rail, we write a lot of reflections, especially after field trips and group projects. Writing a reflection after a field trip helps me organize my thoughts and feelings more clearly, and it makes me more aware of what I've learned. Reflecting after a group project helps me know what I could have done better that time, so I'll know to do it next time. Thank you.
Alright, good eve- Alright, good eve- good evening, everyone. My name is Justin, and I've taken a lot of individual courses through R V S. As you can see on the slide, in my, my, my R V S journey first begins in English ten. That was the summer of twenty twenty three. I learned that R V S has a summer program that allows you to take a course ahead and gain an advantage over my peers to prepare me for post-secondary institutions or any university program I ever wish. When I was grade nine, I didn't really have a direction where I knew what I wanted to do. Would I become an engineer, a doctor, a business major, a philosophy major? I didn't know at the time. But through R V S, I found that my passion was business. Right now, I'm taking economics twelve, planning on doing entrepreneurship twelve, maybe marketing, accounting, financial accounting, and A P psychology, all to help me prepare for university and much more. A lot of the things that I've done, I didn't even know what I was going to do. I thought, why would I go to school for eight, for eight blocks, two semesters, maybe do math, art, science, and I didn't really enjoy any of the subjects until I took R V S and I realized that it could fit my schedule off timetable. I thought it was perfect because as a student, I didn't believe that I had enough time to take the courses I wanted, and now I can see my passion is for business. Now, now, this has led me to taking multiple business case competitions all over Canada as well, global, globally. I'm currently doing Wharton's Global Investing Case Competition where I'm placed as one of six members in managing a portfolio, a business portfolio for Wharton. I get to meet with a lot of new different people that I've met through R V S, taking economics, entrepreneurship, and now, ready for it. This R V S program has just allowed me and given me so many different opportunities to expand my horizons in terms of what I can do, um, prepare myself for university. As a lot of university or post-secondary institutions like University of British Columbia or Simon Fraser University require economics twelve, I go to Robert Cecil Secondary. That program is not offered or is not even beginning to begin offered at my school. And due to R V S, I can take that course. So I'm just extremely grateful that R V S has been able to shape my journey since the summer of twenty twenty three, and now I look forward to my future at a post-secondary institution.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dora, and I am in grade eleven. So above on the screen are the courses that I took with R V S. I'm currently taking, um, pre-calculus eleven and anatomy and physiology twelve through R V S. Um, I would like to highlight, um, the flexible learning and the independence that Richmond Virtual School gives me. So I'm an overachiever as like, like many others in my grade. Um, I'm, I partake in a lot of extracurriculars. So I'm like, I'm the president of the robotics club at my school. I also do dragon boating on the weekends, and I'm also committed to acting in the school play. You might be wondering, it might be, it's really hard to balance taking two courses in the semester along with my extracurriculars. But R V S is different. R V S is mainly online, but there is still a required one, in, there is still a required in-person meeting every week. Um, the online format gives me time to balance my academics and also my extracurriculars. I like that I get to learn on my own pace and at different times at, at anywhere. So like after, after I finish rehearsals with drama, I can just open my laptop and complete assignments through R V S. But I also like that the structure of R V S, which is the, um, once per week in-person meeting, also gives me the chance to do live, like, um, labs and see demonstrations for, from the teacher, such as lessons. Um, the teacher still does, the teacher still does like in-person lessons, and I get to ask questions during that time, which really gives me the chance to, um, be really involved. Other than that, I also like that it gives me independence as I have to take the initiative to get all my assignments and homework done, which kind of helps me with post-secondary as during that time, it's mainly, um, independence work.
Well, just so, uh, proud of our rail students, our past rail students and our present rail students. They're a real important part of Richmond Virtual School. They are a small cohort, uh, eight nines right now, but we hope to continue growing. Um, but it's, it just brings us such joy and inspiration to see them, uh, each day. Um, they're just, uh, a larger part of Richmond Virtual School is where we have currently thirteen hundred students in courses. A variety of mostly grade eleven and twelve, and there's some grade ten courses as well. And then through semester two and our summer program, we'll double that number and will be over twenty-six hundred student courses by the end of, uh, August. So it's a larger program, but this is a really important part is, is the rail program where they attend every day at Palmer. And for our online portion of ten, eleven, twelve, it's meetings, uh, once a week, mandatory meetings once a week after school. So there's a little difference. mandatory meetings once a week after school. So there's a little difference there. And while we have about forty-five teachers throughout the district working with us as well. So that's a pretty large program that way.
We'd of course like to encourage you towards our website where you'll see more about, uh, the programs. We've got, uh, the blended learning program and the sky program, uh, dance and athlete programs. And unfortunately, we don't have time to get into all those tonight, but you'll see also courses, right? And, um, at RVS, there's semester courses, linear courses, summer. And, uh, we're, we're also partnering with many of the secondary schools doing, um, courses with them so that they could offer unique offerings, um, that might not fit their timetable. Uh, what else were we gonna say? Yeah, well, like the students have already shared, students are signing up for so many different reasons. Uh, just wanted also highlight, students will sign up to retake courses to upgrade, maybe to, um, satisfy grad requirements or to be able to, um, qualify for post-secondary. And, um, yeah, it's, it's quite a variety of reasons students are signing up. And so we're, um, yeah, quite pleased, but, uh, needing to be flexible as well. And, um, it's great to see that, uh, students are finding us and, um, when their schedules aren't working out in their homeschool, for example, they're able to backfill with a course through RVS. I guess lastly, we just want to summarize by saying we're super excited about this, uh, these opportunities in ST thirty-eight. And, um, we see inspired students who are thriving and doing quite well. We're very proud of you and, uh, yeah, we're grateful for an opportunity to share a glimpse of what's happening with the people at Richmond Virtual School.
Alright, trustees, any questions, comments? First trustee Larson, followed by trustee sergeant.
You all, oh, sorry. You all spoke so beautifully and your voices just rang with pride and happiness and real excitement. You, you could hear it. And I have to tell you, it's, it's so special to actually hear your voices and see the smiles on your face and your eyes brighten up when you're explaining something that I've read about, but it, this is just so much better. So thank you very much for your time and your, um, your inspiration. It's, it's great to hear. It's wonderful. Really happy for you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Larson. Trustee Sergeant.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, you know, I always, uh, when students come before us, I always think, wow, the world's in a really good place. And, uh, you're extremely inspiring, uh, to know that you're our leaders, to make our world a better place. And when you think about the grade eight students all the way up to grade twelve, eleven, twelve presenting, and it's just fantastic. All of you have such confidence and such passion and you really do come across as very happy, which, um, I know your parents must be happy about that part. I know I would be. Um, so the world's very lucky to have you and I wanted to thank the staff. Um, as we go into twenty-first century and twenty-second century, we have to be nimble and flexible as a system. And you can see from your presentation why that's important. Um, so good luck, uh, you know, have a great rest of the year. And, uh, thanks again to staff who support our young people. And thank you for keeping the program one day a week where you come and be human with each other and connected to each other and to your staff or your teachers. So, thank you.
Trustee Chabloni, followed by trustee Wong.
Yeah, um, well, your presentation was amazing and it's interesting to see how this program has grown over the years and, uh, really adapted to meeting the needs of, of students, the individual needs. For, you know, whatever reason, the personalized, uh, part of this, these options is fantastic for a lot of students. I mean, the, you know, the, um, course offerings are kind of blowing me away. I was thinking, do you take adults too? Um, but, uh, you know, years ago, I remember there was a lot of discussion about online learning and would it take away, um, the socialization that, you know, the regular school day gives you and, and you can see that it hasn't, um, from your pictures and, and the activities that you get involved in. And, um, it, it just looks, it looks like that it's a lot of fun. And, uh, and you can, you can choose the things that you're, you're interested in, which I think is so important, um, making students have to take, you know, courses that, that they're not interested in and probably not going to ever be interested in. Um, I mean, I, I can't think of anything worse than making students sit through something they don't like. So I'm, I'm really happy, you know, to see this program grow and to see the products, which are you. So, um, and thank you to the, to the staff and everybody that keeps the program running and growing. And, uh, you know, I hope it grows further. But, um, the social aspect is really important and, and it's good to see that, that you're getting that as well. So that's great.
Thanks, trustee Chabloni. Trustee Wong, followed by trustee Lisa.
Thank you. My question is that you now, we see is that when it's grade eight, when it's eleven, so do you have, uh, when you at the elementary school, still in the Richmond Virtual School?
Sorry, can you rephrase that question?
My question is that you now you're a secondary school level. And then, and at your, uh, elementary school right life is that you know the Richmond Virtual School and you have this experience?
Um, well, in elementary school, I like, I've heard of like Richmond Virtual School and I was actually like a rail student, which is like, um, Kurt. And like, yeah, they were part of, uh, rail, so I did hear of RVS. But, um, I think RVS is only for high schools.
Only for high school?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's for ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve?
Yeah. So, yeah, Richmond Virtual School is mostly grades ten to twelve, but rail is our eight, nine program currently.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Belisa, followed by trustee Yang.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one of the goals of public education is, uh, developing one's individual potential. And I'm very pleased tonight with your comments that, uh, you can pursue the, the kind of education you want through virtual education. And I'm very glad that, uh, you have that opportunity to develop your individual potential. Now, my concern is, uh, in terms of student assessment and in terms of the enhancing student achievement compared to other regular students, would that program be missing something or would, in, on the other hand, would even improve that kind of the requirements? Any comment from the staff or?
Alright, thank you for your question. So actually, right now, I'm currently taking advanced placement psychology, extremely textbook-heavy subject. It requires you by the AP College Board of United States to memorize over seven hundred pages worth of diatribe and different terminology. I believe with RVS, spreading it over a week and taking your assessments tests by extremely qualified teachers, as many of them have won some of the most prestigious awards in academia. I believe the assessments are well beyond their current level and they're extremely well done. A lot of the tests are innovative and they teach current events and are extremely up-to-date, especially with current events, uh, throughout the world as different wars. All of that can be related to all of their subjects. So I believe their assessments are extremely satisfactory towards the B C curriculum.
I think what's, uh, what's been wonderful too, to see in the different courses we offer, uh, such a variety of, um, uh, setups. There's assignments, there's many projects and there's tests. And so we know that the variety of learning needs are being met through these different mediums. And, um, you know, what's, uh, really assuring as well is these tests are being done in person. So that's, uh, something we're confident in. The students are being authentic assessments as part of their virtual, virtual school experience.
Okay. Uh, trustee Yang.
Thanks very much. Um, and, uh, certainly want to first of all, thank, um, the four students for sharing their stories today. I know that, um, you know, it's, it's a public space, it's a board meeting. And so there's always, uh, going to be a little bit of nerves depending on who you are, but you did it. And, uh, we're so glad to hear your story because it's really speaks volumes about the, the, the variety and the, and, and the fact that RVS addresses a wide range of, uh, diverse learning needs. And, um, we can all see that in the, uh, within, uh, the, 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 the education experience of the four of you. So, uh, we're, we're super thrilled that, um, you, all of, all four of you are doing amazing things in, in and out of the classroom. And to our educators as well, uh, the two, um, uh, the two of you here today, um, you know, we here at such a high level in the boardroom, uh, we talk about issues at a very high level. But, um, you folks are the, uh, ones, uh, carrying out all the important and hard work for, for our communities, uh, for students. Uh, and so, uh, my heartfelt thanks and just, I think that the importance of, uh, a program like RVS can't be, um, it can't be understated because, you know, a, as some of us already said, we are in a, a modern world, uh, where we're more and more connected, uh, with technology. Uh, and so having these, uh, more virtual options is something that, um, you know, not only we're, we're seeing in this school district and we've been doing very well, uh, even my, during my time as a student, but, uh, you know, a, as students go on to post-secondary, that's also, they're gonna see more and more of that. And so just having that, uh, uh, the, uh, those options, um, early on, even in K to twelve is something that, um, I certainly fully support and, uh, and that we as a district, I believe is doing a great job. And so, uh, upwards and onwards and, um, I hope to see all your fantastic work again, uh, sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yang. I have a question. Uh, in terms of your connection with your neighborhood school, like, do you have a connection with your neighborhood school at all?
Absolutely, we do. One of the biggest things in economics and entrepreneurship that I've had that allowed me to take business competitions is meeting different people all across the school district. I have friends in Seeson London Secondary, McRobert Secondary. All of that is due to them coming to RVS. We can talk about specific activities or extracurriculars that we do, like cadets, playing sports, for example, like Babington Hockey, all of that. We have so many different connections just because of RVS. When they come into the classroom or we're talking through online, we can discover each other's passions. And overall, I think in total, I've made almost two hundred different connections just through RVS, just through four courses alone. Yeah.
Well, no, I guess I was wondering, like you said in grade eleven, twelve, that they still have to check in once, uh, once a week. Do they check in? Uh, is there a specific school that everyone checks into or is it all online checking in or?
They, they, uh, attend in person. Majority of our courses are at Palmer.
Okay.
But there's others, courses around the district and different secondary schools as well. So they have that community sense, once they, in-person meetings once a week.
Okay.
But they also attach to their primary school. So like Dora here and, and Justin, they're both at Palmer full-time as well. So they have that neighborhood feel as well and they're doing these additional courses after school to accelerate or repeat. And so they have other connections just outside Palmer as well.
Well, eventually when they graduate, will they graduate, will they go to the Palmer graduation ceremonies or, or do you guys have your own?
Uh, they'll be a part of Palmer because they're primary school.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Trustees, any more questions or comments? Uh, trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the problems that we have in our district gets cancellations of some subjects from the district because of lack of the required numbers of students. Would the virtual schools, uh, answer the, 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 the questions that we have?
Well, we, we have same, uh, we're dictated by registrations. So, um, first peoples courses became a requirement. There's a large number of students that wanted to take that. In the first summer, we went from, um, four socials blocks being, uh, socials explorations eleven, geometry or geography and world history to not running any of those that summer, that first summer. And we ran seven blocks of B C first peoples twelve. So we quickly shifted because of demand. And that would continue to do every, every semester as well. So demand is there and there's people that want a course, we can quickly shift and offer that. And if the man is not there, then it might be canceled for that semester or we might shift it from semester one to semester two and hope that the registrations increase. And, uh, yeah, whatever our students need, we, we quick, quickly, uh, quickly, uh, adapt to that.
You want to say something?
Actually, just adding on to Mr. Chan's point, specifically, a lot of the business courses that I've actually been extremely interested in, like marketing and design and many others, only roughly ten students at my school, Robert Cecil Palmer Secondary, would like to attend that. However, talking to a multitude of business students that are interested in post-secondary all across the Richmond Lower Mainland, all those schools like Seeson London, McNeil, there are over two hundred students that are now connected to being and interested in a business student just because RVS allows certain courses like marketing and design, entrepreneurship, ten, eleven, and twelve. Macroeconomics and microeconomics are extremely important. And just, just to answer the question, it, it does allow, then just because certain kids at certain schools don't exactly want to attend or pursue a career in business, that doesn't mean overall all of the kids in Richmond Lower Mainland where I attend school don't want to do business. So RVS does a fantastic job in providing an opportunity for all students across the mainland.
Thank you very much. Uh, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you folks for coming out tonight. I know you guys got busy schedules, obviously. And, uh, you know, we assume that our programs are doing well, but it's nice to see the students. And then we see this and we go, yeah, we are sort of on the right track. So thank you very much for being who you are and, uh, being a part of this program and being great ambassadors for it. And, uh, we hope to see you again, right, folks? Thank you. Now, you guys are welcome to stay for the duration of the board meeting. Uh, we will not be offended if you walk out the door on the side. In fact, we'll be very surprised if you last the whole board meeting.
Thank you for having us, all of us here.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving on with our agenda. Item six is the approval of minutes from prior meetings. Uh, there is a record of an in-camera meeting at the board held Wednesday of twenty, sorry, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Another record of an in-camera special meeting of the board held Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, approval of minutes, uh, we had a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, October twenty-third. Uh, are there any, after the minutes, any errors, omissions? Are we good? Think I get a mover in a second? Pardon?
Overproof.
Oh, moved by trustee sergeant second and trustee Larson, all in favor? Thank you. Carry. Business arriving from prime minutes, there is nothing, uh, new business. Um, the RC Tommy Elementary School Improvement Straddling Property Lines Covenant Bylaw, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have a report from our secretary treasurer attached. Would you like to speak to it?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Chairperson. Uh, my report is on page fifteen of the public board meeting package. Uh, so this is, uh, the purpose of the covenant is to complete the building permit approval process for the new building additions in Tommy Elementary School. Um, according to the city bylaw, the board is required to grant a, a covenant and register that covenant against the title of the school property. And according to the school act, the, the covenant must be approved by the board by adoption of this capital bylaw. And the granting of the covenant does not have any impact on the school district's ability to deliver um, current and future educational programs. Therefore, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this covenant bylaw as attached to this report by way of three readings in today's public board meeting. Thank you, Chairperson. I'm welcome to any questions or comments.
Alright, or we have any questions for our secretary treasurer? All right, or we have any questions for our secretary treasurer? Okay, and trustee Yang, I can't see his screen. It's good? Okay, so I'm going to read the recommendation and uh, uh, go through this process. Um, rather lengthy. Um, so bear with us, please. Uh, recommendation from the secretary treasurer is that the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-eight approve the R C Tomy Elementary School Improvement Straddling Property Lines Covenant Bylaw, twenty twenty-four by way of three readings, three readings, um, in this public board meeting on November twentieth, twenty-four. Okay, do I have consensus from the trustee that uh, we can do three readings take place in this meeting? Good, looks good, looks good. And David? David? Oh, boy. All right. Okay, so I'm gonna read this agreement. Uh, the bylaws be read three times at this meeting. Um, I will read the first uh, reading of the bylaw in full and then the second and third one will spare you guys and it'll be an abbreviated version. The Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-eight, R C Tomy Elementary School Improvement Straddling Property Lines Covenant Bylaw, twenty twenty-four. Whereas a board of education may dispose of land or improvements owned or administered or sorry, administered by the Board of Education under the authority of section ninety-six-three of the school act subject to the orders of British Columbia Minister of Education and Childcare. And whereas the Interpretation Act defines the word disposed to mean to transfer by any method and includes, among others, things, grant and charge. And whereas a disposal of land or improvement by way of grant of a covenant does not require approval from the minister pursuant to minister, minister order M one nine-three uh, slash one oh eight, which is the disposal of land or improvement order. And whereas the section sixty-five uh, five of the school act provides that a board of education may exercise a power with respect to the acquisition of disposal of property owned or administered by the Board of Education only by bylaw. And whereas the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-eight is the registered owner of the R C Tomy Elementary School property with a civic address of ninety-four eighty and ninety-five hundred Kilby Road, Richmond, B C V six-six-three and two and legally described as follows. Uh, parcel identifier is zero-one-seven-eight-five-four-nine-three-eight. Legal description is lot one, section uh, twenty-seven, block five, north range six west, New Westminster District Plan L M P five-two-two-four. Uh, lot one and parcel identifier is zero-one-seven-dash-nine-oh-eight-dash-one-five-nine. Legal description, lot A, section twenty-seven, block five, north range six, west, New Westminster District Plan L M P six-one-six-six. Lot A and together with lot one is considered the property. The property is facility number three-eight-three-eight-oh-five-four. The board will be adding an additional, adding in addition to the existing building known as R C Tomy Elementary School, which addition will straddle the lot lines of lot one and lot A. As a condition to issue uh, the issue of a b- building permit from the addition, the city requires that the board grant an improvement straddling property lines covenant uh, in favor of the city to be registered against titles to the property at the land title office. The board has determined and hereby confirmed that the granting of the covenant will neither conflict with nor detract from the regular or extracurricular program of the school or the current or future educational need of the school district. And the board is satisfied that the covenant will benefit the board uh, and that the granting of the covenant will not interfere with the board's use of the property. Now, therefore be it resolved that the bylaw of the board, that the board enter into the covenant and grant the covenant to the city in the form required by the city and register the covenant against the title to the property in the land title office. Be it further resolved as a bylaw that the secretary treasurer be and is hereby authorized on behalf of the board to grant the covenant of the city and to execute and deliver the covenant and such amendments thereto as the secretary treasurer may in their decision consider advisable and the secretary treasurer be and is hereby authorized on behalf of the board to execute and deliver all relega- all related documents required to grant the covenant to the city and to register the covenant against the title of the property in the land titles office on such terms and conditions as secretary treasurer may in their discretion, consider advised, advisable as witnessed by the signature of the secretary treasurer. The bylaw may be cited as School District Number Thirty-eight, R C Tomy Elementary School uh, School Improvement Straddling Property Covenant Bylaws, twenty twenty-four-three. Oh, I gotta start all over again. No, kidding. Twenty twenty-four. Um, can I have a mover and a second for the first reading? Trustee Sergeant, thank you. Trustee Tablotny, seconded by trustee Tablotny. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, carried. First reading is carried. I will now read the second reading of the bylaw in summary as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The bylaw may be cited as School District Number Thirty-eight, Richmond, R C Tomy Elementary School Improvement Straddling Property Lines Covenant Bylaw, twenty twenty-four. The bylaw for the board is to enter into and grant the covenant to the city in the form required by the city and register the covenant against the title to the property in the land title office. The board has determined and confirmed that the granting of the covenant will not conflict with the educational needs of the school district. Can I have a mover and seconder of the second reading? Trustee Larson, Larson and trustee Wong, thank you. Uh, are there any questions or discussions? Okay, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? A second reading is carried. I will now read the third, um, I will now read the third reading of the bylaw in summary as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The bylaw may be cited as School District Number Thirty-eight, R C Tomy Elementary School elem- sorry, improvements straddling property lines covenant bylaw, twenty twenty-four. This bylaw is for the board to enter into and grant the covenant to the city in the form required by the city and register the covenant against title to the property in the land's title office. The board has determined and confirmed that the granting of the covenant will not conflict with the educational need of the school district. Can I have a mover and seconder for the third reading? Trustee Yang, thank you, and trustee Larson, who uh, seconded? Are there any questions or discussions? I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, the third and final reading is carried. The R C Tomy Elementary School Improvement Straddling Property Lines Covenant Bylaw, twenty twenty-four, having been read a first, second and third time, is passed and adopted uh, November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, folks, for listening to all that. All right, uh, we're now moving on to item number nine, which is questions from the public. It's our second question one and uh, second question period. And if you have any questions regarding agenda items, feel free to come up. Uh, you need to come up to the table? Yep. Just in front of our microphones so we can catch you. And if you could say your name?
Yeah. Hi, uh, my name is Vincent Ying. I'm the immediate past chair at the Dixon PAC. Uh, my question relates to uh, agenda item five. So the strategic planning uh, update that Superintendent Anushi gave. Um, I was just wondering with the newly formed government that is also in power for the next four years, I'm wondering if the school district, you mentioned a consultant or ministry consultant, is there kind of a parallel relationship happening in terms of what the uh, relationship is? Because I guess during the election, the N D P platform versus the B C Conservative platform is very different. And my understanding, talking to different parents in Richmond, is that when things happen, parents need time to adjust and react. Because when the stuff comes up like from executive orders or like, um, it's like very sudden, for example, like the cell phone banned. And so I'm wondering if, um, what you're saying about the consultant, is there kind of like mediation? Because I know there's also a new Minister of Education as well, so. Um, just hearing the students tonight presenting, it was very encouraging to see that the district is very innovative and has these programs in place. And sometimes, I guess, for me being from Richmond and also now my kids are in Richmond, so I, I understand that there's a local education to stay local and I'm not of the position that the government should always just tell us what to do since, you know, they have different ideas, so, um. Yeah, I guess do you anticipate any change in that relationship with the ministry or? And that's not necessarily a question directly towards you, could be anyone who has.
Hmm, uh, true to chair. Uh, first of all, thank you very much for uh, for that question. And uh, it's uh, it pleases me when parents uh, really have invested interest in uh, the work that happens in our schools and uh, in public education. What I can share with you is that uh, as you know, we are one of sixty school districts in the province. Uh, we uh, work very closely with the ministry, Ministry of Education and Childcare. And of course, you have an elected board of trustee, of Board of Education. Uh, seven trustees on the board who are also connected to uh, uh, through appropriate uh, uh, channels, whether it's uh, the trustee association, so on. So staff work very closely uh, with uh, with uh, the ministry. So even though you have a change in government, what happens there is that uh, the staff, at the staff level, the uh, the work continues. And of course, if there's a change at the provincial level, we adjust accordingly. But usually those changes are not as dramatic in a way where, like tomorrow, we have to change curriculum overnight. So there are usually uh, processes in place, whether you have a different government or not uh, that allows for districts uh, to take the time to uh, to implement some of those changes. So uh, rest assured that uh, the quality of education that your child is receiving in Richmond is not gonna change tomorrow, uh, whether there's an election or no election. Uh, in fact, quite frankly, if anything, uh, the ministry would be ex- demanding or expecting uh, again, uh, will be questions around, are we even do m- more with what we have? So I'll just, uh, I don't know if the, if uh, the board uh, wish, anyone wishes to make a comment uh, over to your ministry?
Trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Madam, uh, Mr. Chairman. We as part of the Board of Education, we are governed by the scholar. With the election, the laws, the legislation remain the same. Unless there are some changes in the legislations or then as part of the uh, uh, under the ministry, then we have to, to do something pursuant to those legislations. But of course, there is all, there are some parameters that the board has the discretion to do within that power under the school act. Thank you.
Trustee Blahney?
Yeah, um, thanks for your question. Uh, trustees work very closely through our provincial organization, the B C School Trustees Association. Uh, and we work uh, very closely, you know, that, that organization works very closely with the Ministry of Education. Um, we're all accountable to whatever government is in power and the whatever, you know, the um, government that forms the ministry is. Um, but direction is not made even solely at the ministry level. It's, it's done through consultation with um, partners in, in education, including the B C School Trustees Association. And our trustees were across the province work to um, to really uh, further the success of our students. And that's what we'll be doing this weekend, actually. We have three days as, as a, a provincial organization at a conference. And I'm sure that we will be getting a visit by the new uh, Minister of Ed- Education. And um, quite often we pose uh, uh, questions to that minister. And then in April, we have an annual general meeting where we actually um, put together all our advocacy through the B C School Trustees Association. And, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a big and important process. So um, you know, we're not necessarily told what to do all the time. We, we tell government what to do too. So it's kind of a back and forth and we have a, um, memorandum of understanding and memorandum of understanding to that effect as well, that should continue, so. Rest assured, we're not just um, acting on what government tells us to do regardless of the government that's in power.
Thank you, trustee Blahney and uh, trustee Yang.
Thanks very much and uh, uh, hello Vincent, nice to see you in the boardroom today and uh, um, you mentioned the uh, strategic plan, so uh, and, and it's a good question because um, and I, and I think it's good uh, information for the public to know that uh, you know, with the strategic plan and also actually with our uh, the long-range facilities plan, um, which are, uh, which the consultations are underway. You know, there will be opportunities for, for feedback and so I think the um, the, for, for members of the community, that, that's certainly uh, an, an avenue to uh, you know, burn your thoughts. And I know we had an open house not too long ago for our, our long-range facilities plan and those are just one of many opportunities to engage, so um, I'll leave it at that, but uh, yeah.
Thank you. All right. See Belisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in addition to the political process, we know we have the legislations. But in a body politics, in terms of advocacy, you could advocate for some change. And whenever the, like the provincial government could change or amend the school act, it remains the same. You know, whatever pursuant to legislations and not the regulation.
Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Thanks for your question. Anyone else uh, want to stump the panel? No. Okay. Let's move on here uh, to our standing committee reports. Uh, starting off with the audit committee. Uh, here, trustee Yang, can you?
Thanks very much. Uh, our next meeting is Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty-five. Thanks.
Okay, our education committee, trustee Larson, anything to add?
Yes, our next meeting uh, is held January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, five P M. No, six P M, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I'm in the chair of the Facility and Ability Committee. Um, minutes of the meeting held October second are attached for information. And we had a meeting Wednesday, November sixth. Next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December the fourth at four thirty P M. Uh, financial legal, trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much. Uh, we had our meeting. The minutes are here from October sixteenth. And a meeting was held on November thirteenth and at that meeting, we passed a recommendation to the board regarding the twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget process and timeline. And so the uh, recommendation is in your package. We had a, a discussion um, with, with our uh, Q P R T A and our stakeholders at the meeting. And they felt the change in the timeline that we made last year was very effective. And they were very happy with that. Our staff also were happy with that change. So what is presented tonight is the same as what we had last year. Um, which everyone felt that that worked well and gave more time to our staffs and to our um, other partner groups to work through and figure out. We were a bit more, um, we had more time to get out there and, and hook in staff, perhaps maybe before others. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget process and timeline as presented. And further that the board direct staff to publish the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget process and timeline on the district's website.
I second.
Move it and seconded by trustee Belisa. On, oh, sorry, any discussion? Not seen any discussion, all in favor? Oppose? Okay, recommendations carried. Thank you. Okay, uh, policy committee, trustee Tablotny.
So Policy Committee uh, has a notice of motion for um, one-on-one and one-on-one are strategic planning. Uh, it has in the board package, but um, really the background on this one is that uh, for foreseeable future, the Policy Committee will be bringing uh, for bringing to the board with some minor revisions to existing policies in accordance with policy two R R Development and Revision of Policy and Regulation and the Checklist for Policy Regulations Guidelines Revision and
and the checklist for policy regulations, guidelines, revision and development. There ultimately, you know, minor revisions supported by the policy committee, but will require approval at a public meeting. So we're bringing this one to the December eleventh meeting. And really the proposed minor revisions are guided for the need to align existing policies with new understandings through the diversity, equity, inclusion lens. And, you know, such things, a specific example is the type of language that we have been using over time, which is for, you know, our, what we now call partner groups. And that's the word that's going to be used in our, in our policy from now on, if it's approved. But we used to use the worm word stakeholder. And that has kind of a negative connotation to many indigenous people. So these are the kind of revisions that we're moving through. And so we'll bring, we'll be being, be bringing that to the December eleventh meeting for approval.
I second the notice of motion.
Do we second?
I don't think we need a second. It's just a notice that we'll be bringing a motion, yeah.
Okay.
The understanding that it's a notice of motion?
Yes.
Okay, question trustee sergeant?
Yeah, I just recommend to the policy committee, just, we had to make a notwithstanding in regards to voting for virtual trustee today. And I think, you know, that may happen in, as we move along in the future. And so if policy could have a look at our bylaws, our, our policy and maybe make reference to that. And then the good work, the S T, our Secretary Treasurer did in how it actually worked. I think having that in writing is really helpful, so you don't have to read. So I would just recommend that to the, or suggest it to policy to have a, a look at. And if you feel it's warranted, I think that would be helpful for next year. Thank you. We can put that in the hopper because, yeah, as you encounter these things, policies need to be updated. And time and that would be a relatively minor revision, but probably one that would need to go out for approval. Whatever you think you.
Right? Okay.
Sorry, and a meeting was held on November twelfth. And the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December second. It's been moved up due to the Christmas break, so for the, yeah. Winter break. So that's at eleven A M.
You, our board committee and representative reports. We had a council board liaison committee meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty-four. It's fairly short, actually. Anyone who attended, is there anything, any highlights for you that you want to share with the, the public?
Not at this point, I don't think.
There was a good meeting, though.
It was, but yeah, no, not at this point, I don't think.
Okay, B C S T A, we have a trustee academy is scheduled for November twenty-first, twenty-third at the Bay Shore Vancouver. Trustee Yang, do you want to? You are a B C S D rep. Anything you want to say?
Yeah, just, we had a provincial council meeting in late October. And, you know, there was some information shared by the B C S T A's climate working group, as well as the capital, the capital working group, and certainly some good information about the state of where capital planning is with all our school districts. And there's some good information for trustees to look at and that, that full package is in our newsletter. So encourage all of you to check that out. But I think the, the T L D R is that we, we need more capital funding all across, all across the province. And as well as for climate, because those things are, are kind of hand in hand. You know, you can't have great infrastructure without those capital investments coming from Victoria. So certainly encourage folks to check that out.
Thank you trustee Yang. B C P C, our B C P C annual general meeting is scheduled for January thirty, thirty-first. Trustee Blahdy, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I will be attending that, obviously, as the continuing B C P C rep, the one and only. And this, I attended a symposium, I think it was November eighth and ninth or seventh and eighth. And there was about two hundred and sixty people, including trustees. Our own Tanya Major, the Director of Human Resources spoke about teacher and a recruitment. She was part of a panel, panel. And we had some presentations on A I in education and what it can do. And it's actually incredible. And it can even find ketchup in your fridge. If you show a picture. So it was, it was actually really super interesting. Bargaining was, there was lots of information covered on bargaining. And of course, local bargaining has begun already in many, many districts across the province. And I believe the collective bargaining through B C P C will begin in March. I think all contracts are up by then. So they'll have lots of work to do. But the, it, it was, a lot of the discussion and presentation was very informative, but it was also very humorous about different situations. But really, what was stressed was the importance of relationships and maintaining relationships during bargaining. So it was, it was a really good session and and stay tuned for the annual general meeting, which I believe trust alt, I'm not sure, but I think all trustees could attend if they want to.
Thank you very much. Moving on to number twelve, item twelve correspondence, there isn't any this time. So we'll move on to number thirteen adjournment. Can I get a mover and seconder trustee Belisa? Second there, trustee Larson, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, meaning is adjourned. Trustee, we have to stick around for our in camera, inclusion of our in camera meetings. Thank you everyone for coming. Drive home safely.